Hey, quit shooting them off of the boat. Put it in the menu, bud. I'll do selfies with my kids.
Please rise.
Let us pray that we all may work together for the betterment of our city, respecting each other's perspectives and striving for fairness. Let us seek wisdom and understanding as we make decisions that will impact all residents. Let us pray for our city to have compassion and unity for all well beings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now call the Wheeling City Council Meeting of October twenty-one, twenty twenty-five to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Osara?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Mayor McGruder?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Seidler?
Here.
Mr. Spalmanakis?
Present.
And Mr. Thorngate?
Here.
Quorum is present.
Thank you. We have the minutes of the October seventh, twenty twenty-five before us. Is there a motion to accept those minutes as we see?
So moved. Second.
Are there any changes, discussion, additions? Hearing none, I'd ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? And that motion is passed. At this point, we have a scheduled public hearing. Is there a motion to leave the regular order of business?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the meeting will begin. I would ask, we have two representatives this evening from Ogilvy Park with us, Jim Gardil and Bob Peckinpah. I would ask them please to approach and make their presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to this bond issue. I'm going to turn it over to Bob Peckinpah to describe the projects for you. But just briefly, it's a twelve million dollar bond issue that we're doing a conventional structure where the city does not label on these bonds. The Park Commission will pledge gross revenues to repay the bonds. West Banko Bank is the purchaser of all the bonds. So it's a single bond and a private placement. I think terms and conditions of the bonds you're very familiar with. Other than that, are there any questions, first of all, on the structure or the debt offer? I think they're all wanting to hear about the projects that will be funded. So let me turn it over to Bob and he'll describe this for you. And I think we have a presentation on the screen.
Sounds like I'm just arm candy to the brains behind the operations here. So thank you all for having us tonight and working with us on this bond. The first slide here, if you want to move on. This is just an overall look at the twelve million dollars for those monies will be spent. The next slides actually reiterate those numbers and go into the specific projects. So at Ogilvy Lodge, you know, we had the Lakeside Wing renovation, which were actually just in the final stages of doing punch work in those rooms. So the entire Lakeside Wing, which is the newest wing at Wilson Lodge, went through an entire renovation through the bedrooms and the bathrooms. And this is the outcome of what that looks like now. The next slide. Here we have the Ogilvy Good Zoo, what we're calling the Gary E. West Pride Land Villas. So we, the next slide will also show you the Pride Lands themselves. So when we were building the idea of having a lion habitat at the zoo, Dr. Joe came up with this wonderful idea of also putting housing or lodging on that property as well. So we'll have three two-bedroom villas there that you'll be able to sleep with the lions. In this picture, you see on the left is kind of that entryway coming down the stairs. You get down into that living room area. And the picture in the lower right-hand side will be, you see that lower window. That's where you'll be sitting and you'll be looking right eye to eye with lions. So pretty excited about that. In the upper right corner, you'll also see the outdoor seating area. This is like above where you can see the tree in the lower picture as well, but it gives you a nice indoor and outdoor experience. So, and the lion habitat, I mean, there's a lot of conservation work that's going to go along with this. Part of the proceeds when you stay in the cottages or you do the lion exhibits will be donating to funds that do conservation work for the lions. So we're very proud of that work as well. And then finally, the Good Zoo is getting a makeover for the entrance of the zoo and the entire arrival experience. So where you see the Good Zoo sign, that whole area, that'll be cleaned up and refreshed when you walk in. It'll have the new look that you see here. The little food and beverage stand that exists today and the retail space will all be enhanced and just create a nicer, warmer environment as you arrive at the zoo. So a lot of wonderful work going on in the park and at the lodge. So if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
What's your timeline on completion of these projects?
Everything should be done by the end of June. We don't, we don't go slow. We did the groundbreaking last week, but you know, we had done the groundbreaking for the lions just prior to Ogilvy Fest. And I think everybody, the Ogilvy Fest was, man, what great weather. What are you doing with the lions? That's so great. That was the follow-up question. So a lot of fun.
How many lions?
We are scheduled to have two, yes. And that is up to the American Zoo Association. That could be one, could be more. That's, that's the plan.
Just so everyone's clear, this isn't any kind of rate increase or bond increase. This is all just flowing through the city of Wheeling. The Wheeling Park Commission was created by the city charterer so that that entity, the Wheeling Park Commission, can sort of take care of not only Ogilvy, but also Wheeling Parks. And so this is sort of why we have to do this. This is sort of, I don't know if it's window dressing or not, but what we're doing is, is the city of Wheeling is allowing this bond to go through us because we don't have any other choice. And this isn't going to raise rates for anyone or anything like this. And Ogilvy Park is completely going to be on the hook for all of this.
Yeah, this is the third time the city of Wheeling has done this on behalf of Wheeling Park.
And they don't have any other avenues to do this. This is the way that, I guess.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a federal statute that provides for the city to be a conduit for this, for this type of financing, which is what, which is all we do. It has no impact on our credit rating. We're not obligated for the repayment of the bonds. We're just a conduit under federal statute.
Right. And this is all on the Wheeling Park Commission, who's.
In this flat office, as you know, the park can't borrow money.
Right.
So we can't incur debt, but we can pledge revenue. And that's the mechanism that we're using with the city's bonding capacity.
Right. And that's, I think everyone up here knows that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the public, since this is a public hearing, understood what was going on here and that there wasn't anything besides that. So I appreciate you gentlemen. That's all. I just, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood sort of what we were going on here. And I gotta say, I love what you guys are doing up at Ogilvy.
Thank you. That was fantastic.
Yeah. Like when I went up there for Ogilvy Fest, I was one of those people as well. I was like, lions? Really? This is great. Can't wait to go. So I appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you very much.
Well, gentlemen, thank you. You know, we constantly, on this end, we tout the quality of life in Wheeling. And Ogilvy is a major part of that. So thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Very good words.
We have no other speakers signed up to speak at this hearing. So is there a motion to return to the regular order of business?
I will move to resume to the regular order of business.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And now we return to the regular order of business. And that brings us to the mayor's report. One comment tonight. You know, we're in some temporary digs here. I think everybody can see that. I hope as a council, we won't be more judicial than legislative. Get that, get that feeling out of the way. But just a few housekeeping things. You'll notice that the setup's basically the same. Some of our ancillary staff is a little different location. When we get down to voice votes, I, I won't be able to say, please record your vote tonight. So at that point, we'll ask the clerk to take a voice vote and we'll have either an a or a n from each individual councilperson so that you can know that. That concludes the mayor's report. Clerk's report?
There is no clerk's report this evening.
Thank you. Unfinished business.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of not more than twelve million aggregate principal amount of Ogilvy Park Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series Twenty Twenty-Five, for the financing of a portion of the cost of certain improvements to facilities located at Ogilvy Park, providing for the cost of issuance of the above bonds, providing for the rights and remedies of and security for the registered owners of such bonds, authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds, and enacting other provisions relating thereto.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, I'd ask the clerk, please, to give us a voice vote call.
All those yea?
Yea.
Sounds like we're unanimous, no nays. So that motion's approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed ten thousand with path of charities for food and food containers to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
I move to adopt the ordinance.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd again ask for the clerk to call the vote.
All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, please record that Councilman Palmer has voted nay. Motion is approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand with family services of the Upper Ohio Valley for food and food containers to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, again, I'd ask the clerk to call for the vote, please.
All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, say nay.
That motion's approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars with Greater Wheeling Homeless Coalition for utilities for transitional living facility and program supplies to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just a confirmation. This is for youth, right? This is for young adults? Like, what's the, this is not a general homeless type of fund, right?
No, this is for the children that are coming, most of them come age out of foster care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'd ask the clerk to please call the vote.
All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, say nay.
That motion's approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed ten thousand with House of the Carpenter for supplies for your reading program to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
I will move to adopt the ordinance? Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, again, I'd ask the clerk, please, to call the vote.
All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, nay.
Motion approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed four thousand six hundred with the Seeing Hand Association for Workshop Supplies to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask the clerk, please, to call the vote.
All those in favor, please say yea.
Yea.
All those opposed, nay.
That motion's approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed ten thousand with soup kitchen of Greater Wheeling for food to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
Move for adoption of the ordinance? Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, again, I'd ask the clerk to please call for the vote.
All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Please record Counselors Seidler and Palmer voting nay, but the motion's approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed five thousand with YMCA for scholarship program to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
I move to adopt the ordinance?
Oh, second.
Is there any discussion? Again, hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call for the vote.
All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, nay.
Motion approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand with Wheeling Health Rate for Pharmaceuticals, Dental, and Medical Supplies to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Again, hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call for the vote, please.
All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, nay.
Motion approved.
An ordinance to enter into an agreement and expend funds in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand with Russell Nesbit Services, Inc. for walk-in showers and various group homes to be charged to CDBG Twenty Twenty-Five and your public services.
Move for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Once again, hearing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the vote, please.
All those in favor, say yea.
Yea.
All opposed, nay.
Motion approved.
That concludes unfinished business.
Thank you. We do have Historic Landmark Commission minutes from September fourth, twenty twenty-five that have been held over. Is there a minute to, is there a motion to accept those minutes as received?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Is there any discussion, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And those minutes are approved. That brings us to remarks from City Council. Tonight, we'll start with Vice Mayor Scott Hoppus, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things, very briefly. First, I'd like to wish good luck to the Wheeling Little Patriots Varsity and Bantam Team. They're playing this Sunday for the championship in Brook, up at Brook High School. I'd also like to remind the city and sort of give a Rochelle with Parks and Recs. And I think Jesse, the city clerk, has been working very diligently for Freaky Friday in the Friendly City, which is going to occur on October twenty-fourth, which is this coming Friday. And there's going to be two places where there's going to be activities. Once, at the Plaza on Market Street from five-thirty to seven-thirty. There's going to be trick-or-treating at the candy stations. There'll be shops with Halloween vendors. Apparently, there's even going to be a clown there. And also, at the same time, at Center Market from six to ten, a little bit of different time, there's going to be vendors and there's also going to be a band there. So this Friday, the twenty-fourth, Freaky Friday in the Friendly City, you're going to have from five-thirty to seven-thirty, it's going to be the Plaza on the Market. And Center Market's going to be from six P M. to ten P M. And also this year, the city of Wheeling is going to have Halloween on Friday, the thirty-first. Actually, we're going to have Halloween on Halloween and it's going to be this Friday. And we're going to, we actually extended the hours. Usually, it's been an hour, but this year, we're going to have an hour and a half. So Halloween in Wheeling will be Friday, October thirty-first, from six-thirty to eight o'clock. And I know, at least where I live, we see hundreds of kids. So I look forward to seeing them all again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Thorngate?
Nothing for me there, thank you.
Counselor Palmer?
I just want to congratulate Eric Ives from the newspaper for his award, recently awarded, that he received for his reporting. So we appreciate your service to us. Thank you.
Was it covering us? You're welcome.
Was it Denny's cloak? Put you over the edge.
Thank you. Counselor Sarah?
Uh, nothing for me, but.
Counselor Seidler?
Hey, Mayor, thank you. I've got a couple of things. One is, folks in North Wheeling, we've run into, I'm sorry, we've run into an issue with our design review process. And that is that we have a number of residents in that design review district who have recently replaced their gas meters. And those meters are going out front, which is really a travesty to our historic district, especially with the narrow sidewalks there. You know, we worked really hard on that historic, I'm sorry, the design review process there. So we need to, we need to, or BJ and City and whoever it needs to be to figure out how we can update that and try and really push Mountain Year Gas to make sure that those meters go back inside in that district. I know there's been a big push to keep those outside, but the technology's there. You know, they've been reading meters inside forever. And we've really got to protect the historical integrity of that neighborhood and obviously our other historic districts. So we're going to look to the city to help us navigate that process to get those modifications in there. And I know that's going to be an uphill battle with, you know, the Public Utilities Commission and whoever, but, but we need to get that process adjusted there. Also, you've heard, we've talked a lot about the lights that have been out with AEP. My last count, as of a handful of weeks ago, was thirty-nine streetlights that were still out on the island. I will say that AEP's been working hard to replace those streetlights all across the city. And it looks fantastic. I appreciate that work. I hope they're going to continue that progress to get the rest of those done on the island. And no, Bob, you have a meeting coming up with them. There is a streetlight in North Wheeling that's been replaced as of a few months ago that we've reported a couple of times to them so far. I would have thought it was done and found out today that it's not. That streetlight was replaced with something that is just a ridiculous amount of light coming out of that thing. And it's, you know, it's putting a sunburn on the buildings, you know, a little bit of light humor there, but it, but it's ridiculous. If you could remind those folks that that light needs to be replaced like three months ago. It is absolutely tracking from their quality of life by putting high beams through the windows there. The last thing was, Mr. Herron, can you, can you, during your mayor's report, can you provide an update on where we are with getting Wheeling Hill fixed? I know that there's some, you know, we've been working behind the scenes on that for quite some time. And I think there's been some progress on that. Could you just talk about that during your mayor's report, please? That's all for me, Mayor. Thanks.
Counselor Kane?
I'm concerned with the current situation on a public property that is exempted from the ordinance, number one, five, nine, six, one, where the city council by majority vote create a section fifty-three, five thirty-three point eight, eighteen of the code ordinance of the city of Wheeling entitled Prohibited Camping on Public Property. This area is known as the former Dog Pound. Winter is approaching fast, and it is my understanding that the last year, a small number of people remained in the exempted area over the winter, which I believe to be well within the number of beds available through the appropriate providers. It is my opinion, and I hope that is shared with my colleagues on City Council, that providing such an outdoor area during freezing temperatures and deteriorating conditions is not in the, the public's best interest and does not serve the goals of the council on furthering health, safety, and welfare of those in the community. Therefore, I would like to move to request that the city manager exercise his discretion and withdraw the designation of this area, therefore eliminating the exempted area beginning on December first, twenty twenty-five. And would ask that my fellow members of City Council support such motion and request. I would welcome any discussion from my fellow council members and Mayor McGruder.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And there's a motion on the floor with a second. We're open for discussion. And I'd only like to say, I'll open it myself by saying that, in my opinion, the exempted camp has been a failure. We're more than two years in. I think it's been a failure, not only for the camp residents, but for neighborhood citizens as well. So I fully support the motion made by Counselor Kane.
I would reiterate that. The intent of this camp was supposed to be a temporary triage for service providers to be able to get down there and get these folks the help they need. It was never supposed to be permanent housing. It was always supposed to be temporary. It was supposed to be a central location for resources to be consolidated. That process has never happened. That camp is, is not a great place. It is, it is, is a special spot of hell. And it's time to close that. You know, those folks deserve better and they need to be around the resources that are there. And, and, you know, that number is going to increase, not decreased. So what is supposed to happen is not happening. So I'm a hundred percent on board at this point.
No one should be sleeping in a tent through the winter. I'd like to see the homeless brought indoors. I'm in support of that.
Further comment?
Is this something we have to vote on, or is this something that we just, the city manager corrected?
The city manager could exercise this, but I, I think that Counselor Kane's introduced that motion. So I think we'd probably go for a vote. I, I personally would like to give our support or unsupport to the city manager so that he's not out there alone on this issue. It is an issue that's been of high criticism at times. And so I, for one, would like to show our support, whatever way we go. Any further comment?
I would like to say also that I did visit the camp. I talked to some of the people that were there. It just broke my heart to see that people are living like this, not because of the winter, but in general. We have several places where they're providing beds and shelter. And last year, there were, you know, we made the news because we left them in the cold to get frostbite hands and feet. And it's not fair for anyone to be out there. So this is why I come to ask that we close it for the winter.
And furthermore, to further your point there, the city of Wheeling has worked incredibly hard to make sure that the resources are available. We work with Northwood Health Systems to make sure that those homeless individuals can get immediate access to detox rehab, mental health programs. There's no more excuses about, we can't get a bed. There's no rehab bed. That problem has been solved. Our Wheeling Police Department has done an incredible job putting together our crisis response unit, which is a team of dedicated social workers and specially trained officers who are, who are tasked with responding to these things. These folks are out there all the time working with our homeless individuals and, and, and other folks in, you know, acute addiction or mental health problems. We've done the things that need to happen, but it's time to, it's time to, to close this camp.
If I may, just to clarify the purpose of the procedure, this is the exercise of discretion from the ordinance that belongs to the city manager. I believe what the intent is, if I'm listening correctly, to Councilwoman Kane, is that she voices it as to a motion as to if there's support for her request to the city manager. It's not necessary, this is not a resolution or an ordinance, nor it needs to be in regard to the way that the ordinance was written.
Okay.
Thank you, President. Thank you.
I appreciate that because I remember when the ordinance was drafted and enacted, it provided, I guess, the exemption was at the sole discretion of the city manager.
Correct, correct. And the creation of the spot, et cetera, and as well as a withdrawal of such exemption. Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's up to the city manager to make that. And I understand that Counselor Kane and other counselors have voiced their, I guess, their position would be they would direct the city manager to do that.
I think we're authorized.
I think we're showing our support.
He doesn't need to be authorized. He can do it. And, right, he can do it. They're just, they're just trying to say, if the city manager would investigate this and come to the conclusion that it needs to be closed, they agree with that. Actually, I think their position is, it doesn't even need to be investigated. They think based upon the information they have now that it should be closed.
It does. And at the, at the, at the end of the day, what I'm hearing is it's ultimately the city manager's decision. And as the mayor said, we're not going to let him, you know, hang out, you know, hang him out to dry and make a decision on him. We're, we're here, I, I'm fully showing my support to the city manager, that I support the decision to close this camp.
Has anyone reached out to the lifeline?
I did. I actually went down there and visited the other day.
And they're, and they're confident they can accommodate everybody?
They're trying to open up ten more beds upstairs. They're dealing with the fire department. And it's, last night, there was like twenty-five people out there and right now it holds fifty. So they're, should be able to.
And it's starting December, is it a twenty-four hour operation? Last year, did it operate twenty-four hours a day?
I believe it did for winter freeze, but I don't know that for sure. They, we've reached out to them and we're going to be scheduling a meeting. We're trying to schedule a meeting within the first week of November.
So by December first, we would hope that, you know, at least we open twenty-four hours a day.
And we're beyond our guidelines of thirty-day notice because we're calling it December first.
The notice is two, is two weeks.
Two weeks. So we're well within, we're giving extra time. We're letting them know.
Yes, that's how.
Effectively, this is a six-week notice, yes.
And I do believe, you know, even though Grant passed this organ, it came down from the Supreme Court, I still think we need to comply with Judge Bailey's order. Okay, Judge Bailey's order. And we've talked about this before. It's seven or eight different things that we need to do.
Which we have done consistently and we will do in the future.
And we'll do in this case as well?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not going to, you know, if this is what City Council wants, the city manager and first responders believe this is the best at this point, then I'm not going to stand in your way.
So I would say that, you know, the last time this happened, we gave plenty of notice, but at the time it came down, we actually went to close that. It was, you know, it was pitchforks and protests and, oh, but no notice. Six weeks notice right now. Like that, saying it loud and clear. Please don't let anybody come to us the day before and say, we didn't know this was happening.
Okay, and before I call the vote, please know this is not an attempt by any of us to extort the, the city manager's power. Mr. Herron does have the power to do this. This motion is to show support of closing the camp. So understanding that, is there any further discussion?
I would, like, I would reiterate that, or it's ultimately the city manager's decision. Correct. And if he has come to that conclusion, I'm not going to criticize him for that. I mean, he's, you know, the reason why we did it because he's, he's in charge of the day-to-day operations of the city. He's the one that hears the reports and everything that's going on. And he's the best, I believe, to make this decision at this point.
Okay, any further discussion? Now, I'm going to cast, ask the clerk, please, to call for the vote on this motion of support.
All those in favor, say yea.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Please, please note, Counselor Thorngate, it was nay. Motion approved. This is a motion of support. I think that concludes remarks from council members. Report of committees.
There are none.
Report of the city manager, Mr. Herron.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Under original propositions this evening, item number four is an ordinance to authorize Caston Baker to finish the Duquesne Avenue sanitary sewer project with paving. That was put on the agenda, thinking that Caston Baker would be doing the paving in a couple of weeks. They actually had an open slot today. So we did authorize them to move ahead with this project, so this would be, in fact, a confirming ordinance. It would go through the two readings, but I did want to bring that to City Council's attention. And then also, the water sewer bond issue that, that City Council passed at the last meeting, we do anticipate pricing those bonds on November 6th. So we're moving full steam ahead with the issuance of the water sewer bonds, which obviously will trigger a number of projects, most notably the Digest Reclaiming Project at the Wastewater Treatment Plant. Then also, in response to Councilperson Seidler's question regarding Wheeling Hill, several years ago, City Council authorized a study of the sidewalk situation on Wheeling Hill because the sidewalks have deteriorated, they're actually cantilevered out over the hill. And back in the 1970s, City Council, for some unknown reason, took responsibility for those sidewalks from the DOH, so they are our responsibility. Several years ago, they were closed, and as I mentioned, we, we had an engineering firm that was authorized to look at how to best deal with the fact that those sidewalks were closed, and they came up with several options, one of which was to replace the sidewalks where they are now. And that was, if I remember correctly, was a $4 to $5 million proposition, because the wall underneath the sidewalks is deteriorated in some places, it's cantilevered out, et cetera. There was one other option to go down over the hill, and which would have been, had some ADA issues. But the other option, which we focused on, was moving the sidewalks from the current side, which is the downhill side of Wheeling Hill, to the other side of the road, and, and putting those sidewalks against the hillside. There were some issues with that, but at the time, what was proposed was to narrow the two lanes that go up the hill, narrow those down from, I believe they're 12 feet, down to 11 or, or 10 feet, which would have provided enough room for a sidewalk to be constructed on that side of the road against the hillside. The DOH, at the time, their central engineering office in Charleston rejected that because they did not want the lanes reduced in size, and they felt it was a reduction in service. So then we took a step back, and probably about a year ago, we approached the DOH about, you know, do we really need that second lane going up the hill? Because at the top, it's blocked off anyway. And then the DOH was looking at doing some bank stabilization on that side of the road as well. So we proposed closing the third lane and putting the sidewalk there, and just actually increasing the size of the remaining lane. They rejected that as well. However, Charlie Reynolds, who was the District 6 manager, is now, I believe, one of the deputy directors of the Department of Highways. He has made the case to the Central Engineering Division that, in fact, they don't, we don't need that extra lane because it's for a short distance, and that it would be a good idea to put that sidewalk in that uphill lane adjacent to the bank. There has been some favorable response to that, to DOH, but we have not gotten final approval to do that. So that's a long answer to your question, but it's kind of evolved to the point where there is a possibility that we can come up with a joint project where the DOH does some bank stabilization, and then we're able to come in with a sidewalk on the opposite side of the road from where it is now.
Great, thanks. Can, can I just ask that you, maybe see if there's anything, if we can get an update on, on where they are with that?
Absolutely.
Let's see if we can get a timeline to, you know, get a, get a determination whether that's feasible or not, and, I mean, either way, we need to, we need to start addressing that.
Yeah, I, I do know that the last time I spoke with Mr. Reynolds, which is about three weeks ago, it is still under consideration.
Great.
But I will get an update for you.
Thank you.
And that's my report.
Could I assume, could you on the same topic, if I assumed that when council, the city council back in the 70s accepted that, they probably, we did so by an ordinance?
They did, and there's a written agreement which DOH has.
Okay, so if we can't come to an agreement, can we go and rescind that ordinance or give it back by ordinance?
I don't believe we can, but I can certainly, it's, it's like, got a long term to it.
Okay.
It has a term to it.
All right.
We can revisit that.
Thinking outside.
I have no idea what they were thinking when they did that. No idea.
But it wouldn't deteriorate.
Are there any further questions, the city manager?
Yes, Duquesne Avenue, I mean, I know that, that area has been a problem with the sewer sewers. Is everything fixed now?
I would defer to the Assistant City Manager as to whether or not we have any additional sewer work to do there. I think, as I mentioned to you earlier, as we've gone in there, we've discovered additional sewer pipe that needed to be replaced, and we have replaced it. So I don't know if we're done with that yet or not, so.
They're doing, Verdanus and WPCD is going through and checking where some of the neighbors have their downspouts actually running into the sanitary sewer. So therefore, some of that smell could come back up through those downspouts, and our new stormwater coordinator is actually going through the neighborhood, talking to them and identifying those.
But the collapsed sewer pipes, have they all been found and fixed and replaced?
To, to our knowledge, yes, and they're going to do some additional camera work so far.
Okay, and it's been separated, hence the reason why we're ready to pave them.
That's why we're paving, yeah. The last thing was repaired in the, the middle of the road as you go up to Duquesne, and, and they milled, at my knowledge, they milled this morning, and then we'll try to pave today in between rain showers.
Well, I'll just say that I know this area's been an ongoing problem for a few months now, but all the residents that, that have reached out to me have been very understanding, and complimentary of city staffs, because, but coming out there and dealing with these things, a lot of them almost on an emergency basis. So I'm glad that this is finally coming to a resolution, and, and, you know, they understood every time you dug, you found more problems. So it's nice to know that you guys got it finished, and we're able to get that, at least that part of the sewer separation project done, and taking care of the rest of it. So thank you all.
Are there any other questions, the city manager? Thank you, Mr. Herron. With that, we'll move to the report of other officers, and we do have a Board of Zoning Appeals minutes from September 18 of 2025. Is there a motion to hold those over?
I'll move to hold them over.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?